All right, I got six thirty. We'll go ahead and I will call the meeting to order. Ask for roll call, please.
Here.
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 Join me, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have the minutes from our regular meeting on August eleventh and special meeting August eighteenth.
I move for approval of the August eleventh and the August eighteenth minutes as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the regular minutes on August eleventh and special meeting August eighteenth. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right. Thank you for those that are in attendance this evening. Thank you for those that are listening online. Appreciate being with us this evening. We do have several individuals signed up for a public comment. In reference to public comment, I'd like to remind those making public comment that in recognition of the privacy rights of individuals and employees in the district, the Board of Education prohibits any public comment on individual employees or constituents of the district and on matters in which the employee or constituent may be identified or inferred from the comments. The Board of Education will generally not discuss or take action on non-agenda items brought by the public at this meeting. Before we move forward, just ask that you please be civil. There are a couple of people here tonight that are talking on a topic that I think a majority of us know why you're here, and so I ask you, reference, board member, stay away from personal comments, and if statements are too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, or obscene, or irrelevant, I will ask you to stop. With that, first at the podium, I welcome Dan Koontz.
I'm going to defer to the second speaker this time, and then I'll call Mr. Spirit.
All right. We'll move on to Linda Yudds.
My name is Linda Yudds. I used to come to these meetings, but I never heard a no vote, only yes to everything. Back in August, Uggabrew sponsored a Mark Born event for his supporters. Protesters showed up with their signs on the sidewalk. There were about ten women and one man. It doesn't bother us. We don't read the signs, but we look at your faces, and there's a lady here, I will not say her name, and we remember her. Then we painted, then we painted stones, and they put these on our front yard. About abolish ICE, Trump's the third right, keep families together, we hate Trump. This is what we have to put about. Then, the stones were on the front yard. I don't know how many other Republican Party people have those stones also on their front yard. And as for a certain gentleman here on your board, you should be ashamed for using a dead man's name to put your views on Facebook. What is wrong with your given name by your parents, and how would you feel to have your child assassinated? This school board should be concerned about reading, writing, and math, and be in your protest, will be at the voting booth. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Dan?
Thank you, everybody, for what you do. I prefer not to be here tonight, but I am. It's been a tough week. I think we can all agree, just from a public discourse standpoint. I do want to just take a moment, I take this opportunity just to voice my displeasure with a member of the board. I didn't have anything written, so I don't have anything to read off of. But I think it's important that, as a publicly elected official, members of the board understand that we have to wait for facts to come out before we make opinions on massive matters, and that you're very careful about the words that you use online, because the public has to trust you in your independent judgment here as a board member. Back in August, I went back and reviewed some prior posts that this particular board member made. One person voiced his opinion about how schools should in fact be a place where learning occurs. I think we can all agree that that's the case. Particularly, reading, writing, math, simple things, not a place for D E I. That's an argument on its own. We can have that debate. This particular board member, if he's still using the same alter ego, responded, and I won't use the words, "Shut the F up, you idiot." "You don't have the slightest clue what goes on in classrooms across the state. I'm way past listening and reading the garbage that you post. We need less dipshits like you." This comes from a board member, okay? I think we should all look at each other and say, is that the way we want to communicate online with each other? Is that the public discourse that we want? So the Charlie Kirk thing is not good. I hope that we can all agree with that. I hope we can all agree that an assassination of a person that's doing what I'm doing now, speaking to you and using my First Amendment right, I hope that we can all agree that that is a commendable act. And to see anybody jump to a conclusion about who did it, why they did it, or celebrate it using smiley faces, that's something I think that you need to seriously look deep at yourself and look at each other and say, is this a person that we should have on the board? And if it is, there's a process to go through. But is this a situation where the board needs to look at that person and say, "Do we need to censure this person? Do we need to condemn that person?" Okay? This is a hot topic. I get that. You guys aren't going to address it here tonight, and I appreciate that. I know there's a way that things work. But I ask that you seriously look at that. You all got the email with the screenshots, and I ask that you take it very seriously. We can't have that. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. We will move on to the agenda for this evening. Look for an adoption or a motion, sorry. The adopt agenda is presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda this evening as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right, that moves us on to reports by the administration, starting with eight point one, high school overnight field trip requests. Mr. Gerber.
Well, I said I'd be back, so here I am.
And here you are.
First of all, I put at each of your spots a Badger Conference pass, so hopefully you got that. It didn't go hiding in the time I put it there, so just thank you for everything you guys do. We love seeing you guys out. Our coaches love seeing you guys out about at our events, so thanks for that. I'm going to keep it pretty short. Today, we have overnight and out-of-state trips. It should be in your board packet again. Very much the same as last month when I was here, and a lot of the trips again are the same trips we've taken in the past. So FFA, just checking to see if John's here. John isn't here, but they have the National Leadership Convention at Chula Vista this year up in the Dells. HOSA was able to get a couple of their events in. They'll be attending the state convention in April. DECA has a number of things, and some of these, by the way, are events they have to qualify for, so they don't know for sure yet if they're going to go, but this kind of opens a door for them, say, when they get a qualifier in May, we can, we don't have to get together real quick and approve it, so they've got a number of them. Some in Madison, they've got an Emerging Leaders Conference in the Dells. They've got two trips in Florida. Sometimes they go to those, sometimes they don't. It kind of depends on the student and whether they want to go through with all that travel and whatnot. And then music. Music has got a couple trips on here. The Clearwater Coral Festival in Eau Claire, which they started to go to two years ago, and it's been a really big success for them. And then the one on the final page, which is in Decorah, Iowa, and yes, I put it as January twelfth and thirteenth of last year. Sorry about that. That will be in twenty-six, so we're not going back to the future by any means necessary. So those are the out-of-state trips this time, and I'm hoping that these are all of the trips that we'll have in the first semester, and then we'll come back for anything that pops up in the second semester later in the year.
I'd like to make a motion to approve these trips, but I also want to say in that, that these trips aren't just something they throw together, get a bus, and throw the students on. There is a ton of staff time and student time that goes into preparation for these, and I just want to commend everyone for just going the extra mile. This isn't required, but it's certainly appreciated that they put in all that work, so I make a motion, we approve these trips as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second then to approve the overnight trip request as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right, moving on.
So the second reason for me here is to renew our girls' hockey co-op. In the language of the WIA, it is a new co-op simply because we are adding Lemira. Lemira, whose athletic director is Kyle Tuig, who we all know from a few years back, reached out. They actually got booted out of their co-op with Fond du Lac, and they have a number of girls that skate here in Beaver Dam and don't have a home. So they reached out and asked if it was something we would consider adding them in. So nothing else changes. All the other schools are the same. The only difference is we'd be adding Lemira, and, you know, my first question to Kyle when he called me was, "Do you have skaters here?" Because that's kind of the litmus test. We're not going to jump into free agency like some co-ops across the state. Our NIL program is high enough. We just want to make sure that we're helping the family center and the blue line and red line clubs as they continue to make improvements and strides there. So what I'm asking for is approval of this co-op for girls' hockey. It's the same thing we've had for the last four years with the addition of Lemira to that co-op.
Do you know how many students that's adding?
About two.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, we aren't, we aren't going to be in a position ever, I don't believe, where we're going to add ten, twelve kids to our co-op. Everyone that's reached out, and I was probably reached out to by about a dozen or so schools this year, because they don't have a place to go, and a lot of them are forty-five minutes away or more. It was all one kid or two kids. In this case, Lemira's is about as far as I want to go in terms of distance, because part of it also is the education piece, right? The travel, what are we missing, and making sure kids get to our practices and to the family center safely, and then return. So Lemira's about as far as I'm comfortable taking it, but they have about two girls. I don't want to get to a point where we're taking on an entire, you know, fifteen-person team, because I, as far as I'm concerned, that should be its own team, right? To help kind of grow the sport.
And girls' hockey has one, is it one division?
One division, so.
One division, so there's no impact on?
No. So the problem with, that we're seeing in girls' hockey is the number of teams is actually reduced down. A couple of years ago, it was twenty-four, now we're down to twenty-two, with a couple even Badger Conference schools that are really struggling. So for instance, Stoughton, you know, Stoughton, they're, they used to be up about a thousand kids. They're really struggling with numbers, and they're really struggling in girls' hockey, so unfortunately, co-ops are becoming a norm in the sport of hockey, and I know, like, the WI is trying to jump out and ahead of that for, like, lacrosse. We're not asking for a co-op to become a state championship contender. We're looking to survive and provide an opportunity for our kids, and adding one or two girls really certainly helps that.
So our co-op then will be Lemira, Beaver Dam, Columbus, Dodgeland, Horicon, Mayville, and Randolph.
Yes, and I've also communicated with every one of these schools that, you know, we have to go back to the board every two years, and we will reassess. And, you know, if one team needs to fall off for any particular reason, then we have that conversation, myself and the A.D.
Thank you. Can you remind us of how the costs work?
Costs are divided up proportionally, so, you know, each family covers ice fees, which is a huge piece of that, and that's pretty standard across the board. But in terms of all the other costs, transportation, coaching, equipment, those things, it's shared proportionally amongst the schools. So we've covered the majority of that cost because we've had the majority of the girls. Columbus is probably second to that. They've had three girls or four girls on the team, and so they've been very comfortable picking up that cost. That's not the way it's always done everywhere, but that's the way we felt was most equitable here and fair to everybody.
I move for approval of the high school girls' hockey co-op request as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second to approve the high school girls' hockey co-op request as presented. All in favor say aye.
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 All those not, same sign.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, eight point three. I don't even like saying this word.
The S-word.
The S-word. Snow removal contracts.
Good evening. Tonight, we are presenting to you the snow removal bid breakdown. I believe it was part of your board packet. We received two qualified bids this year. Griswold Excavating and Construction and Winter Services LLC. The equipment fees between the two were pretty comparable. One would be lower than the other in one area, then the other one would be lower in another area, but the biggest difference in this whole thing was the bid price for salt. Griswold Excavating and Construction was like forty-seven percent cheaper, and keeping in mind that every time they're out, they're spreading salt, whether they're pushing snow or whether we're expecting freezing rain or something. So our recommendation would be to move forward with Griswold Excavation and Construction.
But the salt prices have gone up over last year?
Yes.
Everywhere, huh?
Yep.
I make a motion, we approve Griswold Excavating for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second.
Motion and a second then to approve contract to Griswold Excavating for snow removal. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along. Good evening.
Good evening.
Got a resolution for us.
I do. All right, so it's that time of year where we take a look at cash flow borrowing. So this is, this is a process that we go through annually. Typically, we've been fortunate, we haven't had to use this process, but it's, it's a very smart insurance policy for our district to have, so that's why we go through this resolution piece. So just some education on it. Due to the timing of revenues and expenses in the district, there are times where our cash flow is limited. Most for Beaver Dam, that tends to be between Thanksgiving and the first week of December. So that's when we're at our lowest in terms of cash on hand. Borrowing for a district is authorized by state statute. We use a process through a local bank where we get approval for a line of credit, and then we can draw on that line of credit as it's needed. In the past, so in twenty, twenty and twenty, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two, we had a five million dollar line of credit and a four million dollar line of credit, and we did borrow in those years to the tune of two point six million and three point eight million respectively. However, the last three years, we've had, carried a five million dollar line of credit, and we have not had to borrow at all on those. For this current fiscal year, I'm looking for approval for another five million dollar line of credit that will provide us some flexibility to ensure we'll meet our obligations at that load time. We sent a letter to two local banks seeking proposals on this, and we received two responses, one from National Exchange Bank and one from Horicon State Bank. Last year, the line of credit had a six point seven five percent fixed rate with no fees. This year, the proposal from National Exchange is a five point nine five percent fixed rate, again with no fees. Horicon Bank did reach out, and I spoke to a representative there. They offered a better interest rate based on the date they offered it, so they offered negative two percent prime, which on September second was five point five percent, with a floor of five percent and no fees. However, their offer was contingent on us bringing our core deposits to that bank. So we use National Exchange for our general obligation fund, which is our main, main fund here at the district. We're currently receiving an interest rate in that fund of four point four nine percent. Horicon offered three point five percent. So that's the rationale for why we're keeping it at National Exchange Bank. We're gaining a full percentage more in interest every day. And we know we're going to have money in there to utilize that. We don't know that we're necessarily going to utilize this to save, you know, a smaller, smaller difference on a line of credit, so how, that being said, we appreciate both banks' interest. Happy to have accounts at both banks currently, but I would recommend going with National Exchange for the reasons I just stated. It also does make borrowing easier with transfers in our bank accounts if we do need to go that route throughout the year. For this to be approved, it requires the board to approve a resolution authorizing a taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed five million dollars. Next steps, so we're going to carefully monitor our cash flow. We'll likely do a grant claim sometime in early November to ensure that we have that extra cash toward the, around Thanksgiving, and we'll revisit our cash flow needs again next year to see if this is an option we want to keep moving forward.
Any questions?
I make a motion, the board approve the resolution authorizing a taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in the amount not to exceed five million dollars.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Ask for a roll call vote again.
Yes.
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 Donation.
All right, we have two donations to present tonight. The first donation comes from an anonymous donor in the amount of ten thousand dollars and in the name of the Beaver Dam Tornadoes. This donation is to be utilized for the softball field project specifically for the dugouts. It will be recognized with a plaque on the home dugout that references the community's tornado softball program and the history and partnership that this program has had in supporting our, in supporting girls' softball in the community over the years. The second donation comes from Charlie and Gail Fakes, who are generously donating twenty thousand dollars toward the new varsity softball field scoreboard. This money will cover the majority of the cost of the new board and installation. Charlie and Gail Fakes' donation will support the purchase and installation of the new scoreboard, and in recognition of their contribution, the new scoreboard will recognize the Fakes' family on the sponsor designation board. Both Charlie and Gail, as well as an anonymous donor, are making generous donations that exceed the amount of one thousand dollars. In accordance with Board Policy seventy-two thirty, gifts, grants, and bequests, gifts or donations of this size must receive board approval. I am requesting that you approve the receipt of these donations, and in doing so, authorize the administration to allocate this money to the Beaver Dam High School Softball Field Project to be used for dugout improvements and the purchase and installation of the new scoreboard.
Any questions?
This is just wonderful, from the anonymous donor and from the Fakes, that they're interested in continuing and helping with the with the needs there in the dugout and the scoreboard and all that kind of stuff. So I make a recommendation that we approve the anonymous donor and the Charlie and Gail Fakes' donations in accordance with Policy number seven-two-three-zero, gifts, grants, and bequests.
Second.
All right, motion and a second then to accept the donation of ten thousand dollars and twenty thousand dollars as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right, thank you very much. All right, that moves us on to reports presented by the Board of Education, nine point one, Operations Committee.
The Operations Committee has, did not meet last month. In fact, our next meeting is next week, Monday. So at this time, I would ask Joanne and John if they've met to talk about any of the referendum or items that are taking place on our monthly updates.
Yeah, we have met a couple of times. The most recently, we went over preliminary budget numbers, which is just kind of the allocation they've got in pots on where we're going to start receiving bids, so they're ready to put out bids, and it looks like the budget's in really great shape. We're really excited to get those out and start seeing them come back as we approach groundbreaking on October fifteenth. So it's getting close and it's gonna start to become real. Looking forward to this, it's gonna be something that the community can really be proud of.
I have nothing to add, because that's basically what we went through that big packet and went through the whole thing, so it's really shaping up, so.
Brian, do you or, or Troy, do you have anything to add on what's been happening?
I can just add a few things to the other projects. So in regards to the middle school, we're currently bidding out our builder's risk insurance for the project and the early site work. We're starting to, to put bids out there for that, or I'm sorry, receive bids for that. For Washington, phase one is mostly complete. We're gonna be closing out the financials for that phase in October. The HVAC install has begun in the commons. Landscaping plants and biofilter planting is taking place at Washington for phase two. And in the next two weeks, the masonry walls should be complete with stud framing. That's obviously underway. The football lighting is installed. Grass has been planted on the JV baseball field. The high school softball dugouts are currently under construction. The site work for the softball field is taking place. The JV baseball infield should be set this week. The ADA pathways will follow the site work and the retention areas when those are complete. And then by early, by early this winter, we plan to bid out the playground improvements for Lincoln and Washington and those will take place early next summer. As far as budget wise for, for Washington, we're under or on track and the high, the high school and the other district-wide improvements, we are, we're right within our budgetary constraints that we set up early this spring, so.
Troy, nothing to add? I'll cover it.
I've heard great feedback on the new playground, so. Sounds like they're being well enjoyed.
And it was also good for us to have a meeting at Washington School and had an opportunity to walk through that and see what, what had happened and not, and hopefully everybody's back at school and doing well, so that's good. So that's all for operations.
Teaching and learning did not meet?
Teaching and learning also did not meet due to the board workshop last month. We are also meeting next Monday at five-thirty.
All right, sounds good. Nine-three, workshop review. So we did have a workshop on the eighteenth of August. It was a opportunity for our district administration, specifically the principals and associate principals, to come together with the board to discuss school success plans. So the building principals and their guiding coalitions worked together in development of the school's success plans that were shared at the board at our workshop, the school principals and associate principals. And the sharing of their school's success plans, reviewed their goals for English, English language art, arts, mathematics, safe and healthy schools, and/or engagement and connectiveness, including current state, desired state, and key action steps. I know from myself, I was real happy with the, the amount of activity and goals that were set by the principals for this upcoming year. And I was excited by the amount of energy and enthusiasm that the principals and associate principals had in discussion of their, of school's success plans. So it was a lot of really good information and I would open up for the rest of the board to make any comments regarding the workshop.
I would agree with you. We got some new people, new, new places this year in different positions and felt really good at the end of the workshop that we're gonna be heading in the right direction this year, so I commend everyone for their enthusiasm and, and their vision down the road to provide the best education possible, so, thank you.
And before we move on, I just wanna thank the principals and associate principals and obviously all our administration. I know that, that's not a simple task, to do all that work, so I appreciate your work in putting that all together, looking at, you know, where we ended last year and what we can do to constantly improve our schools. So thank you very much for that, I appreciate it. All right, and then with that, we will move on to board engagement and recognitions. Again, this is an opportunity for, for the board to share out any engagement opportunities they're involved with or any recognitions, so I'll open it up to the board.
I did go to a couple of girls tennis matches. Definitely had different energy than the boys. Lot of fun. I'm not sure that they won though, the ones that.
Anybody else?
I attended the last plan commission meeting with Mark when we were over, doing the overview of our middle school plans. So the plan commission got the last look and was able to ask any questions that they needed to, and then also I participated in the Beaver Dam Scholarship Golf, Beaver Dam Scholarship Foundation golf outing to raise money, so I did that also.
You represented us well.
Oh yeah, I mean, two years in a row, I busted a driver. It's called cheer strength, didn't see my, my occupation of farming piss off because you gotta get the ball, not the ground before, so. The driver with the head went about thirty yards and the ball stayed right on the tee.
John was there in spirit.
Yep.
I know it seems like a million years ago, but I went to the first day of school where everyone gathers in the auditorium and it's always so fantastic to see the schools come together and the new teachers, you know, being wrapped around by the, by the teachers that have been there for years and being absorbed into their school families. And of course, Mark's message and his fantastic new shoes that were part of the message. So he's not wearing them today, but I'm sure that you'll see him soon. It was, it was really a great day and it was just so happy to, I was so happy to see everybody back and everyone seemed happy to be back, so it was good.
Well, I haven't actually gone to an individual school, but I have driven past the, the elementary schools, a couple of them, Washington and Jefferson and Lincoln as to when the kids are out playing and seeing them on, on the apparatus that's out there that is fairly new in, in a couple of those places and that all the kids can be on it. That's what's really good, whether they're, have a handicap in any way or that, that there is some option, opportunities for them to be on the playground and it's fun to watch them, so. That's good for the elementary schools, thank you.
Yeah, I also went to the first day meeting with staff. I thought that was a great day. Mark appreciated the message. I'm glad we didn't allow anybody to hurt any watermelons, wreck any watermelons, so that was a positive. And then also went to the scholarship found, the golf outing for the Scholarship Foundation with John and Chad and Mark as well. It's always a great day, really appreciate the Scholarship Foundation and all they do for, for our local students. I don't think that can be understated, so, yeah.
All right, thank you.
I think one more time, I just wanna thank everybody and I, I'm gonna clap, I don't care if you clap with me, for those great donations, because those are substantial gifts that will go a long way to supporting our programs.
Anybody else? Mark?
I just have two, two things. Just wanna thank the staff and admin, our parents and our PTOs for a great start. Not perfect, it's never been a perfect start, there never will be, just to clarify that with any board members who might expect that. We tried to get pretty close, but it was outstanding and it continues to be, so thank you for that work. And then I, I just wanna give, we don't maybe do this enough, but I wanna just thank our alumni, particularly those in our community. There's some on the board, believe it or not, but, no, we've got a lot of alumni that are a part of like local contractors that we partner with, some of them working on projects that we've had throughout the summer. Don't worry, they get the lowest qualified bid, okay? But we've got a lot of, lot of BDHS alumni doing a lot of great things in our community and it runs the whole gamut, so we need to continue to celebrate them. And then also with that, Max Ludkey, as a, as a state FFA leader, he'll be hosting the, he along with our local FFA chapter will be hosting State Leadership Conference here in Beaver Dam, I believe, in two weeks. So really, really special event. I know the high school team and is gonna welcome them very well and it'll be all the buzz and they'll be wearing their full getup, so it's gonna be, it's gonna look very, very sharp, those coats are awesome. So anyway, just we got a lot of great alumni doing great things in our community, so I wanna make sure we recognize them.
All right, thank you.
I move the board recess in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen-point-eight-five, print one, print C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation due to any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility specifically to discuss specific employees and employee groups.
Oh, second.
All right, motion and second to move into closed session, roll call.
Yes.
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 All good? Alright, we are all back, we'll reconvene in open session and move on to district policy and guidelines, twelve point one.
There are no resignations for your consideration tonight.
And leaves of absence.
Alright, there are four leaves of absence for your consideration tonight. The first one, I'd like to note that the leave of absence extension would be through March thirtieth, twenty twenty six, and the rest of them that are on there, the dates are provided.
I move the board approve the leaves of absence as presented.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion of second to approve the leaves of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. Alright, appointments?
I have six appointments for you tonight, for five different people, all are long-term substitute positions. One is Rhonda Boyd for physical education at Lincoln Elementary, long-term sub September fifth through November seventh. Jordan Hogg, art teacher at Prairie View Elementary, long-term sub from September sixth through October twenty second. Steve Kinsey, special education teacher up here, for a long-term sub September twelfth through October twenty second. Jeffrey Poomivong, music teacher at the middle school, long-term sub from August eighteenth to November fourteenth, and then he'll be switching over to the high school for mu- music for both, choral music, November seventeenth to January fifth. And then Mary Kay Streblow, first grade teacher at Jefferson for a long-term subposition for November eleventh through February ninth.
I move the board approve the appointments as presented.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion of second to approve the appointments as presented, roll call vote please.
Mary Mason?
Yes.
Mason Kanter?
Yes.
Chad Reedy?
Yes.
Heather Schultz?
Yes.
Trent Higgeski?
Yes.
Isaac Farthing?
Yes.
Arch Dervison?
Yes.
Doc Ross?
Yes.
Mary Burns?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and moving on to other business, payment of claims.
I move for payment and claims in the amount of six million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, fifty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion of second to approve payment of claims, roll call vote please.
Mason Kanter?
Yes.
Chad Reedy?
Yes.
Heather Schultz?
Yes.
Trent Higgeski?
Yes.
Isaac Farthing?
Yes.
Arch Dervison?
Yes.
Doc Ross?
Yes.
Mary Burns?
Yes.
Maria Mason?
Yes.
Alright, entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion of second for adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Not, same sign. Alright, thank you, we are adjourned.